Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the July 23, 2019 meeting of the Titusville City Council at 5:30. We do have a quorum. I will declare this meeting a call to order, rather. Please join me in a moment of silence. Please join me in the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
First item of business is special recognitions and presentations. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, sir. We have for the months of May, June, and July. And the first we will recognize is Mr. Steve Adams from the Development Services Department. And he was the City Employee of the Month for May 2019. And Ms. Busaka will read citation.
I'm concerned that Steve has to get out of here. Clearly, he's going to go marry someone. By that, I mean officiate. Yeah. I've never seen him look like this either, so. Anyway, I appreciate he's up front. He's up first. It was my pleasure to nominate Steve Adams as the May Employee of the Month. He was promoted to the building official in a time in which we don't have a full staff. We're very busy, and there were some issues that had been lagging when he arrived. He took all of this into his hands masterfully. He has done a wonderful job in getting our single-family permits online, which has been very helpful for people. He's done a great job getting employees cross-trained and up to speed. Because we can't find employees with the right licensing, Steve went out and found a way that we could use, what would be the word I'd want, Steve?
Third party.
Third-party inspectors. The first couple of weeks that he was the building official, there was a fire on one weekend, there was a vehicle that drove into a building on another weekend, and he has just done a remarkably wonderful job. And it is a great pleasure to see him recognized as the May Employee of the Month.
Thank you.
And I want to corroborate what Peggy said because he wasn't here too long when he was given the initiation under fire with some other incidents we had going on. And I, before the meeting, congratulated him on his professionalism. So with that, this is yours, and there's something in this.
Oh, great. Thank you.
Peggy, why don't you get in the middle of us, two little guys here?
Great. Thank you. Congratulations again.
Thank you very much. And next, we'd like to recognize Eddie Galindo from the Planning Department as the City of Titusville's Employee of the Month for June 2019. Eddie, and I believe Brad Parrish is going to do the presentation.
I'm very happy that Eddie is our Employee of the Month. He did a great job working on two different projects for us and meeting our deadlines. Basically, he helped us last year with coming up with new policies to meet the deadlines that the state required us to meet as far as coming up with resiliency policies and some sea level rise policies into our comprehensive plan. So we were able to get our evaluation and appraisal report, those comprehensive plan amendments adopted in time. And then the next step, he went forward and submitted a grant to the Florida Department of Environmental Protection to help us with coming up with a resiliency plan. And he was instrumental in getting the East Central Florida Regional Planning Council together to help us go forward with that plan, and he led that effort. We got that approved, and he was instrumental in working with all the different agencies and all the different staff members and conducting all the different public meetings and answering all the questions, several night meetings that were difficult sometimes. It could not have happened without his leadership on this project. So I'm very happy that he was nominated or selected for the Employee of the Month, and we're actually very happy to have him stay here with us in the Planning Division.
Well-deserved.
Thank you very much.
In fact, the whole department is amazing with all we got going on and being shorthanded and everything. I'm just totally impressed and appreciative of what all of you do.
Thank you.
You can stand right there.
We'd like to recognize Chad Clark from the Water Production Department as City of Titusville's Employee for the Month of July 2019, and Sean Stoffer's here to do the presentation. Mr. Stoffer?
Good evening. Very proud to have Chad here as Employee of the Month for July. Chad is our chief operator. He started with us back in, I believe it was January of 2014, as a water operator trainee. And so he has risen up through the ranks from not having a license to all the way up to now having an A license and now being supervision in the five years that he's been with us. And we don't see that so much anymore today where you have homegrown leaders, but I'm very proud that he has risen up through the ranks. And by doing that, he has definitely gained the respect of his peers and shows himself as a true leader. One of the other reasons why we have chosen him as Employee of the Month is his leadership that he showed during the last chlorine dosing. He is in charge of the water quality for over 53,000 customers. He is also in charge of taking care of databases, DEP reporting, and, you know, he's the real reason for the water quality and for keeping all of us safe. And so I want to thank Chad for all of his hard work, as well as his promotion and recent A operator's license, and is definitely a deserving Employee of the Month.
That's quite a background, but thanks for what you do. Without you, we'd all be very thirsty.
Thanks very much, sir.
You can jump right in.
Yes, sir. Item B, the City's Historic Preservation Officer and Historic Preservation Board recommend to the City Council the approval of the listing of the Gibson Rivers House located at 723 Palm Avenue to the City's Local Registry of Historic Places. The building is significant in Titusville's history and architecture, possesses integrity of location, design, setting materials, and workmanship, and meets the criteria as specified in Section 29116 of the Historic Preservation Code. The City's Historic Preservation Board Officer will make a presentation of the 723 Palm Avenue. Sir?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm Eddie Browder with SNME. And let me see, is this turned on? Yes.
Got it?
Okay. See if that's going to work. Yes. Okay. Excellent. This evening, before I start, I would like to thank a few people because I can't take all the credit for this work. There've been many people, spent a lot of hours researching this family, this house, before I ever got involved. So I'd like to thank, first of all, the applicant, Mr. Benjamin P. Warren, Jr., the entire Historic Preservation Board, but mainly Ms. Ross Foster. As all of you know her, she's passionate about historic preservation and does a tremendous amount of research here, and she's the one who provided the family history. The North River Art Historical Museum provided images and maps and such, but particularly Margaret Vessels was just excellent at emailing me things that she found on her own. And like I said, I could not have put this report together without all their help. So we're going to look quickly at some general information, then we're going to move through the features of the property, talk about why it's significant, and then we'll conclude with our recommendation. So as I mentioned, the current owner is Mr. Benjamin P. Warren, Jr., and the property is at 723 South Palm Avenue, just a few blocks from here. And the earliest plats that we have are from 1879. This was actually a town of Joinerville, and it was platted by L. Francis LaBaron, and it was owned by a lady named Mary M. Carlin. And like I said, this was in 1879. It quickly became a vibrant black-owned business section along South Street. And you'll notice on this bottom image that there's one lot, and I'm going to zoom into, that spans the entire width of the block. It goes from one street to the other, from what was South Palm today all the way to South Hopkins today. And this is that lot now divided into three sections. Originally, the street to your, well, what was now Palm would have been Joiner Avenue, and Hopkins, South Hopkins was Second Street at that time. So now you can see that the lot's been divided into thirds, and this lot number three is the one with the home that we're going to talk about tonight. The earliest sandborne map that we have of this area is 1920, and you're probably very familiar with sandborne maps, but just for the record, I'll state that the sandborne maps were provided by, or were created by, the Sandborne Fire Insurance Company. They were selling fire insurance. So it was, they needed to know, is a house wood? Is it concrete? Does it have a water tank? So all those type of things that would help them rate the fire insurance cost. And they now, years later, have become tremendous assets in research, finding out how things have changed over time. So here you see the house, 723, or 725 Palm on the left, and then 720 Hopkins on the right. And then, as we move forward, five years, you'll see that that little structure at the corner of 725 has changed. In fact, the great thing about the sandborne maps is you can almost see how they erased and what was there, and what's, it's something you lose in the digital age, but it's great on the sandborne maps when you can see how things changed over time. It's 725 now. It was shown on this map as 723. And here are the two maps side by side. So again, you can see that in 1920, those two structures between that time and 1926, those two structures were taken down, and the current house built in 1926. Now, the ownership history goes all the way back to the original land grant with William T. Leese, and then Mary M. McCarlin acquiring the land, which I mentioned, she founded Joinerville. These other names, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on because we're going to talk about them in detail, so they won't mean much to you now, but the Gibson family, the Rivers family, the Williams', and then we end up with the Warrens today, which still own the property. And where does this fall overall in the history of Titusville? It would be here in the, whoops, in the 1920s, when you had the Florida real estate land boom. So this affected not only Titusville, but the state as people were flooding into the state, could not build accommodations fast enough for them. So now we'll move into part of the family history, and we'll start with Andrew Jackson Gibson because he had a tremendous role here in Titusville. His father was William Gibson, a mulatto slave in Georgia, and he's uncle of Addie Rivers, and we'll talk about Addie next, coming up. So they came to Titusville in 1876, he and his wife Emily, and he started the first, he is known as the first black businessman of Titusville and had a barber shop and shoe repair shop. He was later supervisor of the only public road in Brevard County, and he formed a Brevard County poor farm. He was also founder, one of the founders of the Missionary Baptist Church, which is still today here as known as the Greater Bethlehem Baptist Church. And here's a photo of Andrew Jackson Gibson. And that's the only family photo we've been able to find, so we don't have photos of the other family members, even the more recent ones. William Gibson is a descendant. This is now 1865, though not to be confused with the 1805 William Gibson in Georgia. He was the son of Edward and Emma Gibson, brother of Addie and Jerusa, which we'll talk about in a minute. And then he married Kate Reed in 1870. They started building tenement houses for people who would come here and work, or people that needed a place to stay and wanted to rent a home. So they had a number of these homes near 723 Palm. Here's some on Palm Street, which were saved in later years and moved to the north, by the North Brevard Heritage Foundation. So these three homes, in addition to other structures they've collected, are going to one day hopefully be a museum, a history museum of Titusville history. But all of the tenement homes did not have the same fortunes. These were the ones across from the courthouse of this new cyber article from 1967 when they were torn down to make room for the parking lot. Now, Addie Gibson, again, thanks to Ms. Foster, we have a good bit of information about Addie. She's the niece of Andrew Jackson Gibson. He's the gentleman I showed you the picture of. And she's the daughter of Edward Gibson, which we talked about. So she lived at 720 Hopkins. The lot, remember, was divided into three parts, and this is lot number one, which was up on Hopkins. And later, she married Henry R. Rivers, and we do know that she was laundress for the Pritchard family. So right over here, the Pritchard house, some of the town's earliest pioneers, we know that she was their laundress. And later in life, her sister passed away. She took in her niece, Jerusa. And Jerusa ended up owning the home on Lot 3, which is the current home that's there And Jerusa's, let's see if I get this right, Jerusa's had a daughter named Bernice, and Bernice is the mother of the applicant. So now we'll look at the property features and the home itself, the structure. It is known as frame vernacular architecture, which mainly, frame vernacular means it's built a frame, but it also has a vernacular feel. It was locally built by local craftsmen, most likely, may or may not had plans, and it's, so it doesn't fall into a style like Gothic or craftsmen or something like that. So we call it frame vernacular. It is one-story, has a porch on the west as well as a porch on the north facade, has a cross-gable roof with tin tiles, and looking at these, they could be original from 1926. It has two exterior chimneys on the east and north facades and a painted clapboard So here's the west facade and the south facade. It has been boarded up for security purposes, and the original windows, we assume, are still there. We know they're old windows, at least, that the boards are helping to protect them. The east facade and the north facade. Again, there's, you can see here where there's chimneys on both sides. And the real only alterations that we see are these brick columns or knee walls, if you will, and this landing in front of the house, because this brick does not match any of the brick on the chimney. So we feel this was added later, and it could be taken away in the future and not jeopardize the historic integrity of the house. So why is this structure significant? It was, as I mentioned, built in 1926, so it was a part of the Florida land boom, which had a big effect here in Titusville. It's a good example of frame vernacular architecture, and it was owned by the Gibson Rivers family, who, I mentioned that Addie worked for the Pritchards. Jerusa was also domestic for the Richards. So they both remained domestic for the Pritchards. And so for that fact, we consider this structure significant, both in design and for the residents. And our recommendation, options for you are to approve this proposed recommendation, to deny it, to amend it if you need additional information, you could continue it for additional information. And our recommendation from the Historic Preservation Board in July was unanimous that it come before you all for approval tonight.
Any questions from Council? I did find it very interesting that there was a town called Joinersville in the middle of Titusville, which is basically a block.
Right. And I thought that plat was very interesting. If you look very closely, they spelled out Joinerville. It looks like, almost like logs that are connected. It's just very interesting.
Was that commonly done at that period of time to take a small area and make a town?
You could, yes.
And what did that, did that serve a particular purpose to the owners? That they couldn't be arrested or something?
No. I don't know. I don't know that part of the history, but where, in Sanford, where I'm from, we had Georgetown, which was primarily where the freed slaves settled. Then we had Sanford.
Uh-huh.
Then you had Melonville, and all of that now is Sanford, but it still goes back to those individual smaller groupings of people. Everybody didn't have their own city hall and things like that, but it was more like little areas and towns. They could have had their own little commercial core.
Okay. I do have some more questions. Remember, Jordan?
I really appreciate you giving us the history. That was really interesting.
Thank you.
For sure. You did a good job, too.
I appreciate that.
Did this house have a bathroom in it?
Yes. We were not allowed to go inside because it was all boarded up, but it did have a bathroom.
It did have a bathroom.
I'm not sure, remember bedrooms or anything. We have not seen a floor plan.
Okay. So what is the plan for the building?
They do want to restore it. The owner has mentioned that, that it was, it is, I dream to restore it. And going back to the bathtub, the reason I know is because he said somebody stole it, stole the clawfoot tub, as well as the wiring. So he's got a lot of work to do, but he wants to do it properly. That's why he's having it designated now. He understands that as a locally designated structure, any exterior improvements that are significant will need to come back to the board for a certificate of appropriateness, and he understands that.
So usually with a building like this, then the exterior has to stay for that period, but you have to bring the building up to code?
Correct.
Is that right?
Right. I mean, there are some, it's a challenge, you know, that especially if it's going to stay residential, it will be easier, but there's exceptions in the code for historic structures if an architect and engineer can prove that it's meeting the life, safety things that are in the code that sometime destroy a historic property.
So they're planning to stay in it, to live in it once they restore it?
They hope to have it restored and be habitable.
Okay. What is it, two-bedroom?
I assume. I haven't been in it, so, yeah.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Thank you.
Go right ahead.
I was waiting to see if you asked this question. So did they have their own government? Do you know?
Oh, in Joinerville?
Yeah.
I don't know anything else about Joinerville, other than it said that it was, you know, it said it was a thriving business.
I'm just nosey about, you know.
That's something we'll need to research more on, because that's all I know, is it was Joinerville and when it was founded, and that it was a thriving area.
Okay.
Had shops, residents, churches.
They had to have some form of government.
I don't, I don't know.
That's why, that's why I thought she was the mayor.
I want to tell your wife that.
Okay. Any further questions? I don't see any. I'll accept the motion.
Sir, we don't need to vote on this. This will be on the consent agenda.
Oh, okay. All right. Okay. Great. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We'll take care of this in the next one. Letters of appreciation?
Yes, sir. I'd like to read the letters of appreciation that were received for the following employees: Titusville Fire Department, Bobby Crocker, Stephen Hartcel, Dana Hershey, and Mark Wharton; from the Community Development Department, Mr. Steve Adams, Eddie Galindo, Tish Hood, K.B. Yofuso, Sam Rosario, Brad Parrish, and Lori Roberts.
Next item, petitions and requests from the public. Is there anybody who would like to speak?
Good evening, Stan Johnston. I'm here, as you know before, because I'm, there's a lot of phone calls, just not return emails, I respond to, and I must confess to you that I have a good bit of anger and frustration and disappointment with what's going on in my city, our city. And so today, I sent you an email regarding the, an affidavit that I'm preparing to be recorded. And so in this email I sent to you, it says, "Please contact me for any clarification." I'm adding the word nonsense to all this affidavit, but the, I can only go over a few items because I don't have much time. You don't give me much time. So the, there's facts of gross negligence, and I want to use the word nonsense, deception, dishonesty, and fraud include, I'll just go over the numbers. Number one, just a few of the numbers. One, city's closed-door policy to me by city manager and council that refuses to genuinely discuss problems. Number four, city's failure to admit to guilt of 31 years of erroneous flood zone elevation of Baker's subdivision. Number five, city's failure to have maintenance of drainage relief to the St. John's River as required for many reasons. I've talked about stormwater management plan, firm maps, and so forth. Number six, here's, number six is not, you're not going to like this. Acts slash statements of malice and fraud at council meeting of February 12, 2019, and later by city manager and mayor, and the enabling and supporting of this malice and fraud by unanimous vote of confidence and abundant praise to city manager by council at a later meeting. And in parentheses, I put, "No admission of errors, misconduct, or wrongdoing." Number seven, city's denial of facts about drawings of illegal flooding and a legal taking of private property by city's design and/or construction of dams, weirs located downstream of Parkland Estates and Baker's subdivision. Number eight, city's failure and refusal to obtain a competent professional engineer to dispute my findings of facts, city's errors, negligence, nonsense, incompetence, dishonesty, in parentheses, I put, "City can easily afford to do this." Number nine, city's convenient loss of records of design and review of dams, weirs, and other records. They're gone. They're not here. They're recoverable from St. John's, though. And then I wrote, and then it says, "Simple, basic questions that city manager and council are unable to logically..."